We're going to call this here meeting in order. This is regularly scheduled commissioner meeting of March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We will start with prayer. They'll overcome before you. We ask for your leadership, your guidance and everything we do. Every decision we make, Lord, help us, Lord, to keep in mind that we are service to each and every one out in the county. Lord, please be with us. Take care of us. We thank you for all you do for us. Amen.
Amen.
Say pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
I don't know what's happening. It's been a long week.
It's just Monday, isn't it?
Not when they had no days off. It's been a long.
We've got three additions to the agenda. Uh, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
I approve.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Motion carried. Approval of minutes. Y'all see anything wrong with them? If not, we need a motion to approve them.
I approve.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of financial reports. We have any questions on it? If not, we'll need a motion to approve.
You want to make a motion to approve?
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Appearances, election integrity update. Let's keep going. You want to come on and tell us what you got?
Yes, sir. Thank y'all for letting me speak tonight. Uh, been here several times before. We've got some new folks on the board today. I'd like to talk to them and explain everything again. I'm not here speaking as a Republican or a Democrat or independent or anything like that. I'm here as a concerned citizen wanting to help restore uh, confidence in our electoral system. And right now, the confidence in our election system is probably at all time low. Because of stuff we've seen in Georgia and the stuff they're going through in Arizona now, it's just all kind of a little bit of mess. Uh, and back in the seventies, when I went to school, you know, you you was taught when when something starts happening, look for a common denominator. And when you look for a common denominator with the voting problems is the Dominion voting system. And I'm not saying that votes are flipped, votes are changed on the internet. I'm not saying any of that stuff. What I'm coming for y'all again, like I've mentioned before, is the way that Georgia does, and this is a sample that we printed off, that's what the Dominion machine counts. It's that little barcode right there. It doesn't matter what is written down here. It that don't, that don't count for a hit of beans. The computer counts the barcode. And the Georgia law states that the person that cast the ballot has to be able to look and see what his vote is. Therefore, since we can't read the QR code, then you can't download an app on your phone to scan it, see what it says. These votes are to cast by the Dominion machines in Georgia or unconstitutional. To build up voter confidence, what I what I'm still proposing now as I have before is at a time, I can actually read y'all the statute. On the two thousand and fourteen Georgia Code Title Twenty-one, Chapter Two, Article Eight, Voting by Ballot. Voting by paper ballot is possible whenever the use of voting recorders are impossible or impracticable. And what I'm coming for y'all now saying is when people don't have confidence in their elections, people, we gotta do something to help restore that confidence. Because if if you don't have confidence in your elections, uh, you're gonna want to quit voting and you're gonna just throw up your hands and stuff. In the Georgia and the Miller County Republican Party, we went from twenty-some people there about all the time to after two election cycles, when all these voting regularities that came out, we just have a handful now because people are saying it don't matter what I vote, they gonna put in there who they want. And what it all boils down to, i- if if you run a business and you get in a bunch, a couple of fake hundred dollar bills and you make a deposit, it ain't gonna be correct. But you're gonna count up them bills and you're gonna have the right number of bills for what your deposit is, but those fake ones don't, they don't count. There's way to tell if a fake hundred dollar bill is fake and getting a little marketing right on, hold them to the lights, see the water, all those things we've got built up in there. In those Dominion ballots, there's no way when you do a recount where you can tell if that vote is legitimate or not because it's counting the QR code again. If we voted on absentee ballots on day of elections and use an absentee ballot counter like we do for all absentee ballots in Miller County, those, I don't know, how many of y'all ever voted absentee or not? I I voted absentee the last couple of times just because of this situation with the Dominion machine. You take that pen, you circle in that dot like old school test in high school, you can look back and you can see this person voted for this candidate, this person voted for this candidate. You can go back and any qualified person can look and see what the votes are. And our Dominion machines now, the way they count them, you can do a recount till you wear the ink off the paper. You still don't have confidence. And that's what I'm getting back to is restoring the confidence in our elections where people would say, well, that person won. I might not like it, but that person won. When you don't have that, you're gonna get what we've got now where people are frustrated, they're angry, they all throwing up conspiracy theories and all this when if you just take a s- technology is awesome. I would, I got a tractor lot late and doesn't drive itself. I just love all that stuff. But when everybody just tear up, you got something tore up. You ain't got road markers on your planter, you just shut down. And I'm coming to the commissioner board saying our voting system is broken down in Georgia. And if you keep, if we keep doing what we've been doing, we're gonna keep getting what we got. It's lack of confidence in our elections, lack of people thinking their vote counts, less voter input, qualified people not voting because they don't believe that the outcome is free and fair. And that's what I'm coming to. I'm I'm not coming as a Republican or I'm just coming as a citizen, concerned citizen in Miller County. I want people to know when I vote for X, it's gonna count for X. And we can go back and count them. If it says they got ten thousand votes on election day, we can get their paper ballots and look at them. And we can see ten thousand votes a month, a week or a year. And I have a list of stuff that went on in our last uh, election, you know, around Fulton County. Uh, you had a hundred, excuse me, seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four more votes than in-person ballot images. You had uh, a proper chain of custody on forms for a hundred and seven thousand ballots statewide. Uh, the estimated chain of custody forms missing for three hundred and fifty-five thousand ballots. So you had the drop boxes, you got the voting machines, you had all of this stuff. It's caused people to lose confidence in our elections. And I'm just imploring y'all, as Miller County, I don't know how many counties in Georgia only have one precinct, but we one of them. We got one precinct. It ain't rocket science. We've got the things to count absentee ballots. We think they we vote on them now, some of the people do. That's just good with that on election day and early voting, use those absentee ballots. And then we can count and see what's going on and we can have confidence in our elections here in Miller County.
Is any other counties looking at all this?
There's one in the state of Arkansas that's done this, that's voting to use absentee ba- absentee ballots on day of. There's some more in Georgia that are talking about it, but there's none that's actually voted to do it yet. But tha- that's what it's, you know, I know I'm I saw up town prior been several times, but until this gets fixed, it will be a constant failure of the system. No matter what we do, there's gonna be questions, there's gonna be things until we, this the system has to change. And then there's studies in here that says it's gonna cost a hundred million dollars more the length of the, of these Dominion systems. I think we got them in twenty years. It costs more to run these computer systems than it would to do straight up paper ballots. It they such things ballots on demand, you can go there, you can sign in, you can press it, then it'll print you out a ballot, then you fill it in. There's such things as that, but I'm just saying, let's use what we got now. Let's use the absentee ballots, let's use absentee ballot counters. And there's a recount, guess what? We can get county commissioners now and y'all can look at the paper and y'all can say this person voted for this person and we can, and we can build up confidence. We can have people, observers looking and seeing. That's exactly what it is. And that that's all that I'm asking, folks. And I I appreciate your time. And if there's any more questions, though, we had Mr. Garland Valverde speak to y'all via Zoom one time. That they've got a lot of legal people up there to be willing to answer any of y'all questions from a legal form. I'm a farmer. I just got enough sense of Thomas Hughes. But uh, they've got the ability to answer y'all in legal form where I can just tell y'all what's going on and what's happening now and what appears to be happening to our voting voters here in Miller County. They're losing confidence in our system.
Yeah, I'd like to have proof for myself.
That that, that's all I'm asking for. Because I, I don't like a guessing about stuff that I can't prove. And the things that bunch of folks are hollering about about votes flipped. I can't prove that. With that QR code, I can prove that as unconstitutional, it's a hundred percent unconstitutional. And we, what you as a board of commissioners can make a vote to change that to where we can do something that is constitutional, that will fulfill the rule of law to where each voter can look and see what their vote is before they put it in that box to be counted. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Anybody got any comments or questions? Oh, business fueling surfer report, pages twenty-four to twenty-five. Any questions about it? Yes, sir. Want to know what's going on? Is everybody still going pretty good down there?
Yes, sir. It's going. We're just waiting on the hospital. They they did a tour of the facility and they're getting, they're writing their policies. And then once they get their policies ready, they're gonna sign on with this stuff. Uh, we're buying about a semi truck a month right now. And I I suspect that um, it's probably gonna increase. I'm I'm actually gonna revisit talking to the school system about the buses.
Is this a month or is this?
That's a month, yes. So I'm gonna revisit, I'm gonna talk to them about uh, hospital coming on and and if that's the case, then we'll we'll probably get some about every two weeks. But the price is, we're we're getting to a price. In fact, uh, Total Patrol them is now opened up to where they're gonna start bidding with this too. So that's gonna be another one that we'll be able to bid with.
See, anybody got any questions, comments? If not, next on the agenda, senior building construction. How's everything going down there, dude?
It's going good. I wasn't able to tour the inside of it. Mr. Jerison, he actually went in there today and it looks awesome. I'm gonna get the key and if if, when I do get the key, if any of you guys want to go with us, I'll I'll notify you. Um, they did, they did come in about fifteen thousand under budget. Um, so what they're gonna do now is if you see the picture here, which is the, where they did one side of the concrete, you know, you drive in, it's kind of ragged with rocks and all. They're now gonna go ahead and do the whole entire. So it'll be a complete brand new circle drive and 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 a new parking lot. So they they have enough to to finish that, but they're pretty much done on the inside. Um, I talked to the hospital today and I got getting with Brad, just got us to, we had moved that refrigerator and freezer. Um, and then we had to order a new four, four bay, a full compartment, um, food warmer because apparently then when they sat that one outside on the screen and porch, it kind of got rusty and you know, with rust, you can't do that. So we'll be able to bring it over here and we may can clean it, use it for something, but I do have that. We're waiting on that to come in. So after that, we we should be good to go.
What about the piano?
Um, we gotta get that if that's what they want. I think it's in the, in it in the nurse, yeah, so we can get that put back in there.
Yeah, everybody seemed to be pretty good with the the seniors around there. They seem to be okay with it.
Yeah, as far as I know. And I believe that maybe, was that one of their pianos or where did that, that was here. So if they want that one as well, we can gladly take that one as well and they can have two of them. That's that's kind of in our way. But we'll get that done.
Got any question, comment? All right, next on the agenda, hospital board appointment.
Uh, annual packet there, it didn't come in until late, but they sent me a letter. It was in, it was in probably in the very back of your packet. They they selected late in the building board and there's an official letter there. And I think that was at their last meeting. It was postponed. It was supposed to be the the twenty-something. I think it ended up being the six, which was Monday. And that was out of town they sent it to.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Catherine.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Sure. Well, good time.
All right, next on the agenda, USDA vehicle grants, page thirty-one to forty-two.
And these are, these are Andy's trucks that they they got three quotes on. Um, they also included, um, on page thirty-three, that's a listing of all their equipment that they've got. And uh, some of them, most of the trucks have the years of the equipment, some of them don't. So that just tells you, and the outside of the shell, he's got a handwritten, those are actually the ages of those vehicles. So they even got like thirty-seven years old, twenty-five, twenty-two. So that fleet does need to be.
It's older than you.
Um, and then like I say, he's got quotes in there from the different, from the different one. I've got a breakdown on page thirty-one telling you the the totals and minus the fifty thousand, what we would owe if we went to those vehicles. So you see the the Ford comes in at sixty-one, Dodge comes in at sixty-six, five, and Chevrolet seventy-four, nine, nine seventy-two.
Andy Woodshaw, other than the GM, they a lot higher than the rest of them.
Uh, GM didn't have any, um, any of the work, oh, just regular work trucks that go under the, we got a ID number where we can get a government discount and all that. And they designate trucks for that and GM just doesn't have any of that. That's just walking out, picking a truck off the lot. GM just basically right now doesn't have any, they don't have anything to offer. Um, so you go with the Dodge or, you know, go with the Ford, either one, that's that's about your two options. All right, you can buy a Chevrolet, but you got to just walk out there and kind of pick some off off the lot. And every dealer we talked to was a dual wheel thirty-five hundred pickup truck was kind of just something very hard to get with a GM right now. So, um.
Which one do you prefer?
It doesn't really matter to me. The one, you know, um, really, it does, really doesn't matter between the Ford and the Dodge. To me, it really doesn't matter. Uh, a Dodge is a pretty tough old truck. You know, some of the Fords has had, had a few problems, but we got one that we running this new and had a little trouble to start with, but we got it straightened out. Truck runs fine, so I really don't have, I really don't have a big preference there. You know, it'd probably be, I'd go with money. I mean, we've, money's, we're in dire need of the money more than we are having a preference on a truck.
Well, your Ford is four thousand dollars difference between it and the Dodge. Am I seeing that correct?
And you know, now these quotes are not gonna be good, you know, they're over thirty days old. I mean, you know, we're just grant thing and you know, us going through the grant thing to get, you know, get everything filled out for the grant and then taking quotes, you know, it's a real hard thing to juggle around to have a, a valid quote till you get one thing approved. But that's basically what I would say would be a close estimate to what the price would be. I don't, don't think they'd be going up very much, you know.
That just helps me get the the amount put in for the grant. So y'all, y'all would need to approve the grant too tonight.
Yeah, yeah. I think what they're saying is we want to ask to to send off of the grant, not actually buy the truck.
Yeah, apply for the grant.
And then when we get the grant approved, we can re-quote them and then we'll decide what we want to do. And you don't have to do anything. That's, you know, I mean, but but we'll have a grant approved.
Oh, we know if the grant's approved, a couple of months.
Well, she told me of Mr. Allen that pretty much when you apply, it's approved. Like like the one, the second we're working on, we had an issue with the the jail bond or the jail lease that now we're having to get, we had to come back and and submit that where before we didn't, but when there's new people in the office, they require different ones. But but she told me, Ms. Mr. Allen, that they've been doing it for years and they have no intentions of stopping. So it it's pretty much a guarantee thing, really. Well, they said, Mr. Allen, they had pockets of money and ready to give it out.
Yeah, they were waiting to get the money to open them, yeah, in Washington, I'm gonna say that.
Uh, another thing you have to think about too is, I know everybody's kind of heard it, but kind of got to go maybe with who's gonna get it to you the quickest. Because some of this, some of this stuff's eight, nine months away.
We could go ahead and get them ordered and get it coming or get them, or they could be finding them or whatever.
Yeah, but in that rare instance, they turn you down and you've got trucks. I mean, you you just have to pay for the whole bill. But I mean, he does need trucks. I mean, that's the thing. Um, I did talk to, when we talked about the Ford play, I I talked to Jody personally and he said that they're about six to nine months out. In between there, they could probably get them as early as six months or as late as nine, but nothing over nine. They would, they would already have them.
You're about it, Josh.
Talking to the Dodge, I don't know what.
The Dodge guy is like, Dodge has trucks, you know, in this, you know, can we go through, use our ID number and get a government discount on the trucks? They have like Dodge has trucks now. That's what they take.
See, the only concern about that is see, the city of Cobb is still waiting on their trucks. I mean, they've got Dodges that they've had for a year and they haven't got them in. So I don't know.
I'm sure we could talk to the Ford place though and tell them we want to get them coming. And if by some chance they don't, it sound like they can move the trucks, it's not gonna be a problem to.
I mean, I'm.
Can't find.
I'm almost.
Everybody will tell you everything, you know, just coming in. I'm not a big fan of the Dodge myself, which I'm, I'm a Chevrolet man myself anyway, but you know.
If it was me, I don't know, but I can go right there and get some parts and send somebody to Bama's down there.
Well, it's local too. I mean, you know, I'm not.
You may want to go down to the Bama's and get you a lunch or something. I don't know.
Uh, Dodge, well, the Dodge place in Bama's just sold to somebody else too. I mean, you know, I mean.
The Ford place owns it, yeah.
You don't know whether they got the same mechanics or or what, but Ford place is local, you know, we can buy it for somebody that's here in Cobb.
If I were, I would recommend if we go ahead and move forward with applying for the grant, and then if y'all want to go ahead and discuss buying these trucks, we could go ahead and start putting on, you know, get it motioned, we'd get it started. So I have a motion to go ahead and apply for the grant, purchase the truck with.
My motion?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, now how about the trucks? Do y'all want to go ahead and?
Well, I think you can order the trucks without putting any money down. Do I?
That, that I don't know.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty positive that you can.
If you want me to call Jody and to have that done and just ask him, if if they require any money, I can get back to y'all. But if they just say, no, we'll go in and order it, then then I'll go in and take care of that.
All right, y'all want to go ahead and do that then?
Yeah.
All right, I need a motion to move forward with the order on the trucks. From Ford place up here, Spring Creek Ford.
I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor? Motion carried. Andy, you want us to go ahead and, y'all want to go ahead and discuss this stuff and then now the. Andy, you want us to go ahead and, y'all wanna go ahead and discuss this stuff and then now the tractors, oh, and the mower stuff now as well, so we got him there. All right, on the agenda addition, we got updated tractor and more gears from USDA grant and motor grater update.
I think all y'all might've got just one sheet of paper, the prices on there. Motor graders are, I mean, they're on the lease, they come due, you know, we have to swap them back in when the lease comes due. Motor grater that we got now, the warranty's gonna run out on it April the twenty-second. Motor grater's not due back until a few days into May, but we try to get the thing out of here before the warranty runs, a day or two before the warranty runs out. Cause we don't want something to happen to it and it not be under warranty. Uh, motor grater's gonna be, we're gonna run two motor graders probably from now to the end of the year. Cause it, it, it don't matter what you buy, they're not gonna have another one until basically about the end of the year.
But you said Cat had done, went in and ordered.
Cat has already ordered a motor grater.
Just said he went in and ordered.
And it's al, it's already ordered, um. The John Deere, we dealing with a new company, cause um, they sold, Flint sold out. Not my favorite to deal with them, but I mean, it's y'all's decision. There's forty-four dollars difference in the payment. They're fifty-one hundred dollars and I think Cat's fifty, I think she's got it right, yep, fifty-one hundred and fifty-one forty-four a month. That's what the payments are.
While we're talking about the payments, it's going up from like thirty-five something around now to this five thousand whatever. We're not gonna be able to do this out of splosh. Even, even when the Kubota's paid for, you still gonna be some months. It's, um, or could we think about doing this lease payment out of T-splosh or?
Andy, have we gotten the hell the ditch blade off?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't give it up, not with just running three motor graders, cause you always got one broke down and you got them separated now. You're not running, you're not running two, like we were before, we was running two motor graders together, two on one side, two on the other side. If I'm running a motor grater that's running in Layden's district, he can't fix anything. You know, our, the territory he's covering, he can't fix any, you know, he can't pull his ditches, he can't fix anything. I mean, that, it's not gonna drop the payment that much anyway. If you drop the ditch blade off of it, you know, it's not gonna change it a whole lot, so.
How much do we like on the Kubota, let's say?
June or July?
I think it was May, wasn't it?
It's, it's around June somewhere.
That's twelve hundred and sixty-four, so that's still, you're still short. You're still short.
Yeah, he's pretty well maxed out.
Two thousand dollars more.
Right, right, and he's thirty-five something now.
Yeah, it's about thirty-five to fifty-one, you know, somewhere along in there. But you know, we didn't get, I didn't get to swap my ditching blades this time. I mean, we buying all new now.
Yeah, maybe one is twenty, which one is?
There's one that's twenty-five hundred and something, there's one that's thirty-five hundred and something. It may be the twenty-five hundred and something that, that you're saying.
I think, I think it, I think it's gonna be, well, if I have my other book, I can look at it. Cause I got, I got the prices in the other, I think it's gonna be to thirty-five hundred dollars.
Either, either way.
Either way, it's gonna be close.
Well, you haven't got any other option but take it out of T-splosh then.
What about if you took some T-splosh money and paid off something that else that we got financed as close to paid off? And just have your motor graders and the limb cutter coming out of splosh?
What else?
Cause you got a dump truck, you got the service truck and those are a lot easier just to pay those off. You know, one, one time deal, pay that off and get it off of being financed.
You do that with the truck, dump truck and the service truck now, it's, it's one time, we already paid that, right? Once a year.
That's a payment though.
Once a year, yeah.
Right. But it's still coming out, coming out of splosh money at the end of the year, you know, I mean, you got to have that money in there. I don't know what else we have financed. I know those too, but I don't know the rest.
The, um, I think just the three motor graders and the limb cutter and the cutter. Oh, and, and, and I guess a front end loader maybe?
Or any of those about paid off?
The Kubota's the only front end loader we'd have.
What's that big John Deere you got?
Nah, it's, it's twenty years old. If we ain't paid for it by now, we need to catch up on it or something, cause I mean, it should've been way paid for. We got.
So is, is the, you got a twenty, twenty-eighteen motor grater. That's twenty-six hundred. I'm sure that's probably the one that's coming up for lease, not the twenty-twenty. Twenty-twenty's thirty-five hundred. You got, well, the eighteen is, is two thousand eighteen, is twenty-six hundred and seventy.
It might be that one.
Yeah, that's why I would think that's five years, that's twenty-three, so twenty-six hundred. So it's going up almost three thousand.
Yeah, Andy had, we had, he had mentioned looking at possibly buying the road grater back, but you get it standing warranty on it, but you don't wanna cover your drive frame, but all those sensors and everything else, it can go bad on it, air conditioner stuff. I think that would be a bad move to keep that.
Bad, I actually figured out if we did a three-year warranty and financed what we owed on it for three years, payment still gonna be five thousand dollars. And you gonna have an eight-year-old motor grater and it's gonna have probably thirteen, fourteen thousand hours on it by the time we get it paid for. I mean, that's, I really don't.
I think that'd be.
And you'll have a lot of maintenance on it that you're gonna pay for too. I was kinda hoping that would be an option, but I really don't see where that's a good option myself.
And you gotta turn that one in, will you?
We gonna have it gone from here by April the twenty-second. We'll have it on the trucks and have it back up there too.
Can you do us a, you did it one time and showed us what all was coming out of the?
She's got a picture of it.
It sounded like it was paid for. Yeah, she did it one time, but I can't remember.
I'll get it, I'll get it to y'all.
They gonna tell what you paid and what you hadn't paid and all that, or have you not paid?
It'll just show what he's got for a month, yeah.
Have you paid any of those payments that you're gonna show us?
They, they paid every month.
Except the, except the, the one at the top and it says yearly on that.
Year, okay.
So we need to go ahead and approve him going ahead and let's speak for this road grater that's coming, cause this one's supposed to be gone. And like I say, we just have to, we'll have to take the money out, a little bit of extra money, I guess, out of T-splosh. That's what tell me I do, take enough out of T-splosh just to make the payments, is that correct?
Yeah, the five thousand whatever.
You gonna take that total amount out of T-splosh or you gonna continue to take what, a little bit of the lot in there for this machine now and then take the remaining amount out of T-splosh?
I don't, it's gonna be ACH. I don't think, I don't think you want it divided up into two different checks every month or the same. Even if you're doing checks, you don't wanna pay half of it out of one. I mean, I wouldn't, I think that would get a little messy, but. Whatever, cause the twenty-five may need this other twenty-five hundred to pay for some of this other, other stuff.
So you would say take the whole five thousand out?
She talking about six thousand dollars a year, right?
What's that, yeah. But then this splosh will start gaining sixty thousand.
I'm just saying, you gonna take sixty thousand, T-splosh that you ain't been taking.
I really know.
What, what about, and I'm just asking this question, what about the limb cutter, that excavator? You know, um, the payment on it, if we paid it off? Would it put it where you just take your motor graders and put them in splosh and, you know, not, basically not buy anything else and finance it? Just if you can't buy it, pay for it, you don't have.
That's gotta be forty-one hundred ninety-eight dollars.
That's the John Deere.
That's the limb cutter.
Yeah, John Deere's forty-one ninety-eight.
Now, did we lease it or did we buy it straight, buy it straight up?
We, it, it's on the lease, but you know, we could find out what it would take to buy it out and that machine's only, when you get it, it's only a hundred and sixty thousand. It's not likely some motor graders four hundred thousand dollars and we've had it a while. So we could find out what the buyout is on it. And if we paid it, you know, paid for it and then put just the motor graders in splosh and pay for it. And then anything else we buy, we use the grant and.
Well, we got time, have we got time to, for next month to make this decision, where you can get up the information?
Yeah, I, I don't, I think the John Deere quote, the man was gonna allow me to run it, um, about three months. Um, when they ordered, when they ordered the Caterpillar, that locked the price in on that motor grater. So you will have, you do have a little time. You know, it's not gonna run out thirty days. So you will have, you know, a little time.
You get that right, because he has thirty days on here.
I, I specifically asked him now, you know, now.
This quotation's valid for thirty days, we need to get that.
And that's what he told me that, cause I asked about how long these quotes were gonna be good to make sure that they'd be good when we come here. And that's what Danny told me was that when they locked that price in, that price was locked in, but I can double check that tomorrow, you know, and make sure.
Well, I suggest that we look at this again next month, we need a little bit more information on what we got. Is that okay with everyone? All right, Andy, talk to us about the tractor and mower.
Layden was talking the last meeting and looking at the quotes and we was trying to figure out some differences maybe in some of it. Um, I went over them pretty well. If you'll notice on the Flint quote, there's some things on there that has a price kinda to it. The tractor from Flint has a lot more options on it, um. It's got a, it's got a buddy seat in it. It, it's got a premium cab on the tractor. Um, the biggest option that I saw that was a difference in, in the tractor from Ag Pro and the one from, from Donald Seville was, um, these tractors are, this tractor, which the other ones like it too, but these tractors are equipped for a front end loader. And, um, the tractor from Cogwood, it has the third remote option already on the tractor where if you wanted to put a grapple or an attachment on the bucket, all that is already there. So it's, it's got probably three to four thousand dollars more stuff.
Seven, eight, seven, eight thousand probably.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's got, it's got a good many more options on it than the other two tractors had, cause Layden was sitting here trying to look in two minutes of some of the differences. This one has got a heavier drawbar, it's got.
Extra remote.
Yeah, it's got extra remote. It's got a lot more than two thousand dollars worth of options on it. The, the tractor's a lot better tractor, um.
It's spec, it's spec, they told me it was spec'd out to what a government tractor is pulling mowers and ditches and doing, it's got the heavier back end, it's all that.
But I, I kinda sat down and went through the quotes and got the prices on some, you know, some of that stuff. And they might be an option I missed, but I do know that those are more than the other tractors have. And it's, it's actually worth more, way more than two, like Layden said, it's probably about seven, eight thousand dollars difference in the tractors, um.
My recommendation would be to go ahead and retrieve with Flint, cause you get the butter truck.
They had it on the yard too, correct?
Yeah, yeah, far as I know, they, Cogwood has a tractor and the mower. You won't have to wait that six, seven months. Um, nobody could give us a, a real timeline, you know, anytime you get in something like we talked about the trucks. You don't know, they may come in three months or it may be nine months, but Cogwood actually has the tractor and the mower. And it'll put the two, the two tractors and the two mowers will be identical. So if you buy a part for one, it will be a part for the other. You know, we keep filters and mower blades and things like that. They'll be identical, you know, they won't be any different than them, they'll be identical.
Now, what we doing with the other tractor and mower, we got the fifty thousand.
We got it in.
We're gonna pay it and then we're gonna pay the balance out of T-splosh. Because we financed it through John Deere Financial. With this one, we wanna do the same thing.
Right, same thing.
Then pay it off with the two.
Right, then it will be no payments on it, it's be all paid for, you gotta worry about.
And that's out of T-splosh and USDA.
In the short term, we'll have to make payments out of T-splosh until that grant.
Well, my recommendation is we go with Flint Ag, go ahead and get this thing going, cause Andy's been out starting cutting grass and stuff. So Andy, is any more discussion? Uh, we need a motion to go ahead and proceed forward.
I have a motion.
With Flint. All right, second. All in favor? Motion carried. All right, let's see, we've got you, Andy.
Well, Alan, since, um, since we're still with Andy, I got a, a message from a citizen on Houston Road today. Did he, has anybody talked to?
Yeah, I talked to him.
He's gotta call me today too.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we brought that up.
When it starts raining, you know, we got a big rain quick.
Okay.
Sheriff Heath's familiar with it.
Water comes off the highway right there in one spot, you know, when that water rushes off of that highway and then it kinda catches a little dip there and it just takes a little while for it to go away. Then sometimes if they drive through enough, it'll make a hole in the road, we just have to go fix. And that might not be the, the spot, but I'm familiar with that. There's just, really just not anywhere for that water to drain. And it kinda comes off that highway and runs down.
I know from Paul's road today, he said it was on the water after it rained yesterday and it was gone today. Is there anybody out there, Sheriff?
Paul Road?
No, you're in.
House Road.
House Road.
Now, it's about knee deep now, down there off, at the east end of it, uh, it's the oldest, about bigger than a room right there, you know, that's sitting in there.
We'll check it out.
Is that right there closer than Pond right there?
Yes.
You can't miss it if you go out there. You won't miss it if you go out there.
Oh, I, there's actually both ends of that road, one end that comes off the highway and the other end.
Other end is bad end though. I don't think the, the enterprise side is that bad. I think the, what's that other road?
It's right there.
What's that other road?
Our, our, that spot.
Wallace Newberry Road.
Wallace Newberry.
Yeah, there's, there's just nowhere for it to go. It tries to go down and go through the yard right there, but if they don't keep the yard cleaned out, I mean, you know, that, that goes back to being on private property too, you know, and it, it tries to run down through the yard and go to the, the Newberry Chambers Road really and get to that drain but over there, but you know, sometimes if that's not cleaned out, that water just kinda comes in there and it drops off out of the field right there in the corner.
How about just take a look at it, see if you can do something with it?
Well, if nothing else, we'll build it up and, you know, it'll be, it'll be higher than what it was, you know. But then you can't, you gotta be careful right there and not push it in somebody's yard too. I mean, there's, sometimes it's just kinda hairy working on something, cause if you shove it off in somebody's yard, then the yard will have big mud holes.
Sure, I'm having to dig a ditch down there, cut through your yard with water.
Yeah, everything.
I, ditches is fine with me, but farmers don't want ditches. I, I, I think the thing in there, looking at that road, you know, they, they was ditches dug years ago, so the ditch was here. Well, over the years, you know, as the road grader goes down, they make a bank and you gotta bank about why does these two chairs between the road and where the ditch was on both sides?
Road becomes a ditch.
Right. And I, I think if they could ever get it, you know, fixed and, and then just, just crown the road. It's a one-lane road anyway about it. I mean, you can't hardly make anybody on it anyway. But if, uh, they could crown the road and then water will run off to the sides, everybody's driving down the middle of the road anyway. Farmers, you know, you know how farmers are.
Yeah.
They, they, they don't care much for ditches out there, you know, cause they're trying to turn around.
You got your do, if you got your do's on it, ain't a big deal. You got, you ain't got do's.
When they ditch them up, at least it keeps the fifth row clean. It ain't growing up trees.
But you'll check it out.
Yeah, we'll see about it. We'll, we'll check it out and see about it. It's real narrow through there, cause of the trees through there.
Where that pond's right there, I know, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with it.
Water comes out the edge of that field right there and then like I say, it tries to run, I'm trying, I was trying to think of the man and lady that lived in that house right there on the corner, cause I've dealt with that spot a lot, but I cannot call her name.
Mr. George, that, I've seen that.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. And that water tries to go right to kinda between the property line and two properties. It tries to run down through that yard right there and there used to be a little ditch, but it's kinda done sealed it in grass then now, though it don't drain like it used to.
Okay, but you'll take a look at it tomorrow.
And there used to be a pipe across the road right there that kinda tried to take that water from one side of the road down that ditch, but it's all kinda sealed it in together, coming out that dirt, coming out that field.
Okay.
But we'll see about it. Now that's, we haul some dirt out there. We go pump the water out of it and fill it, haul some dirt out there and fill it in.
All right, we'll move on then. You got enough control. Next on the agenda, uh, Bush Hawk Golf Course, Mr. Winston?
Skip, you skipped the, you can go ahead and hit it, you skipped the share.
Oh, yes, sir, I did. I, I checked it out for about that share. Go ahead.
Good evening. Hope everybody's doing well this evening. I'm here for a splash request for equipment for the golf course. It's been a little while since I've been in front of you, so I'd like to tell you a little bit about what's been going on out there. Give you a little information. Uh, over the last two years, we've, uh, been hardworking on two. uh, been hardworking on two projects. One was a greens renovation project to regrasp the greens out of the golf course. That has shown to be a very successful project for the golf course. It's reflected in our rounds. It's reflected in the positive feelings that golfers, our customers have about the golf course and the heat traffic that we're seeing, people driving from well over an hour away to come and visit the facility. The second project that we've worked on is our bunker renovation project. The golf course itself has about forty-five bunkers that have fallen into disrepair over years due to lack of funding essentially. Uh, we embarked on a fundraising campaign. Uh, we collected about twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, through donations, straight donations. We've spent a little under twenty thousand to this point. We've accomplished renovating nineteen of the forty-five bunkers. I'm hopeful that we'll have a piece of equipment here next week, uh, that's on loan from the city uh, to allow us to prep another eight or nine bunkers uh, to, uh, renovate and get our number up to twenty-seven or twenty-eight bunkers. At that point in time, we'll kinda hold. We'll try to maintain those twenty-eight, twenty-nine bunkers uh, to the best of our ability, given the staff that we have. It's a, it's a monumental task to deal with those bunkers. Bunkers are the most expensive item, checklist item that we have out there. It's hard to believe pile of sand in a hole would be that way, but it is. From a revenue standpoint, we are beating my budget that I had set last July first for this fiscal year to the point where we were able to fund approximately twenty-one thousand dollars in capital, equipment expenses out of our regular ongoing budget. So that's a help to the county not to have to come up with those funds to purchase those needed items of equipment. If anybody has any questions, I'm always an open door out there. Anybody can visit me at any point in time. I'm happy to have any conversation with anybody. Tell you exactly where we are and exactly what we're doing.
That's a great job. I think that's wonderful that it's made money to supplement, that you're making money out there.
To be able to beat our revenue budget. It's the first time we've been able to beat our revenue budget to the extent that we've been able to do this in the last few years for sure. I think in the early, uh, two thousand ten, I think it was around two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, we had a very solid year where the weather was like this, where we had really solid weather days on weekends and we didn't, weren't attacked by weather. And, uh, we were able to build up some reserve and I think at that point in time, the, the city and the county made use of those funds.
Okay, what about your bush, bush hog here?
The, uh, unfortunately, just like Andy shared with you and just like everything else, pieces of equipment are now becoming essentially a financial threat to the facility. We purchased a light piece of equipment, like what I'm asking for today, two years ago for twenty, for sixteen thousand dollars, almost sixteen thousand four hundred something in that neighborhood. Today, I'm asking you to purchase it for twenty-five thousand. I got four quotes on this piece of equipment because I really thought, when I got the first one, I was like, I gotta be able to find a better one. I wasn't.
What size bush hog are you all using?
This is a, a rough mower essentially. It's a tow behind. It's, uh, we have two and the golf course requires two to take care of the amount of acreage that we have.
What size tractor are you running?
It's put on the back of a John Deere.
What size tractor?
We have two, two tractors that we pull these on. One's a sixty-five hundred series that we purchased, uh, about three years ago and I think the others are fifty-five hundred series that we've had for quite a while.
Well, you got the quotes, wouldn't you?
It should be in your packet.
They're in your packet, right behind that. On that, on that cover sheet, I've got the, the three top, uh, bids of the lowest is Ag Pro's the lowest. And you got Flint and you got Atlantic Southern's the next.
What kinda money Recreation Sports got in?
Fifty thousand.
You're talking about taking a half of it out?
I don't think we've got any projects, um, coming up. I was telling Nikki the lights, we talked to George Power and you know, we were talking about doing that. George Power's probably gonna fix them and we just lease them from George Power, so that'll save us money there.
You got any other big ticket items coming up anytime soon?
That's a good question. I priced a used rough mower, excuse me, not a rough mower, fairway mower. Um, that's quoted out right now at about forty thousand dollars. At this point in time, I'm not actively hunting that piece of equipment. There's, we have one spray rig that can spray the green surfaces. That is our most vulnerable piece, as it were. It's a two thousand fourteen model or two thousand twelve model, I believe. And essentially, we can't really run the golf course without that piece of equipment. And used pieces of golf equipment have become so scarce and idle that it's really incumbent upon us to, and I have put out a billboard for that, a search for that. And is, if one becomes available that meets our standard and meets our, our requirements, then I'll probably need to pull the trigger on that to, to move forward. Uh, we just can't be in a situation where we're equipment short in that one spot. We can be a little equipment short in a couple of spots for a sh- short period of time, but this capex equipment is our biggest threat going forward. Being able to function and do the things that we need to do out there with equipment is longer term right now becoming a threat.
Well, which piece of equipment is the most important? Are you the bush hog or the sprayer?
We, uh, we can't run the golf course without either.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
Quite honest.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the money.
I understand. I'm, I'm just being quite honest. I can't run it without either. So, right now I'm asking for you to, to approve this first bush hog purchase because it's the one that's needed and is in front of us.
Any discussion? Y'all wanna do it or? I'm just looking at the money.
Yeah. How quickly does the, um, rec splash replenish, I mean, can we replenish that?
If you look on your financials at the splash report, it'll show you what rec gets each month. It's the Excel sheet.
What page is that?
Look on your buried covers page. Look on any page, what page it is.
Forty, forty-one, does that sound right? Too many numbers. Let me count that. Jeff, you're gonna take over. Would you come over and read all these numbers for me?
All right, so rec is, recreation's right here. Just see this.
Twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars a month?
Yeah.
Twenty.
Some months you know it's better.
Twenty, twenty-sevens. I see twenty-fives is low, twenty-two's is low and I see one.
Depends on how many more people buy.
Thirty-four, yeah. Depends on how much money.
So Brad got anything he's pushing for?
Nothing.
It's a twenty-five hundred.
We were just thinking the lights, but, but I think.
How much is that gonna cost, you think? I mean.
The lights?
Yeah.
Um, it's on there. It was like fifty thousand dollars for two fields. Then we have the tennis lights. Like I said, George Power, I was in the vehicle when, when we talked to him. They were, they were, they're gonna come and beat with this.
But we might be able to lease the lights.
Yeah, lease the lights. They own them, but we lease it and pay the money for the field. Maybe finance the piece of equipment and just pay the payment.
I mean, that's whichever y'all wanna do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be okay with that.
I would be okay with that too, because I think he needs it.
Oh, there, there ain't no doubt he needs it. It sound like he's making money, so.
Right.
I hate to, I hate to cut the man off if he's making money. He needs it. I said, I hate to cut your legs out. You're making money, so I mean, I'm okay with that.
You said that it would take about a month. We plenty shit money if we go ahead and buy it.
Longer than a month.
No, about twenty-five hundred a month.
Oh, twenty-five hundred.
A month is coming back in.
It'll take a while.
Yeah, it's gonna take a while to.
But if, if we financed it, like Babe was talking about.
Yeah, you'll build up a little bit.
And then once we build.
How long is that machine gonna last? Five years, six years?
I would expect this particular piece to last us at least eight years.
Eight years.
Yeah, what y'all wanna do? Then go ahead and approve him getting one. Which one are you getting? Where are you getting it from? Which, which dealership are you getting it from?
This'll be the lowest bid is from Ag Pro. That's what we, in Main Bridge, that's, uh.
And it would be John Deere Finance. We already got an account with them.
Good.
We can just have it all magically come out every month.
I like it.
I do too.
All right, well, just what y'all wanna do then?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we need a motion to move forward on it.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Win, save you those. I have free, free flights too.
How many free flights do I get? Five?
Five.
I'll take it. And rainbows, and rainbows.
Sorry I skipped you there, Sheriff. Come on up there.
No, no problem, no problem.
I had checked it off. I seen a vehicle grant down there, so I checked it off.
I think Andy's relinquished ten minutes of his time to me, so.
Might get fired back up.
You out of time, you out.
Don't mess with it.
Uh, no, unlike everybody else, we, we, we need vehicles and, uh, oh, the USDA grant, uh, that we have applied for, I don't want new vehicles. Uh, the, the vehicles we got, we, we running vehicles right now with a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and ten thousand, uh, miles on them and, uh, we got two or three that, it's been a bad year with deer. Deer is, we, we investigated two or three deer wrecks every night and then some of our vehicles hit deer. We got, uh, two right now. That's, uh, one from a deer and one from a tractor. Uh, and we need fixing, but, uh.
You all run over a tractor?
Sir?
You all run over a tractor?
A tractor hit one, one of ours.
Run over us.
But, uh, uh, but we ain't had time to park them or, or nothing else for them to ride in. So as, uh, the city was selling some of their vehicles there, uh, the one that Chief Telly drove, uh, I think it's, it was a twenty, twenty-twenty, had about thirty-eight thousand miles on it. Uh, the one that Cody drove, twenty-nineteen, had about thirty-seven thousand miles on it. Uh, we would do fine with those used vehicles. Uh, the other thing we were looking at was that van, uh, the twenty-nineteen van over there has got thirty-seven thousand miles on it. Uh, we need, like tomorrow, we got, uh, Superior Court revocations. We got to haul fourteen up to the courthouse. It takes about three or four vehicles and deputies to come load them up, take them up there, two at the time. And, uh, with the van, we, we, we could take one man, we could take them all to the courthouse. Uh, another good use for the van would be in that, in the last ten days, we've had to transport four people. They're not criminals, they're not inmates. Uh, say they're probably with dementia or drug abuse or alcohol abuse to treatment facilities. We've had to take one to Atlanta, one to Villageville and one to two other places there and, uh, uh, we need a reliable vehicle that we can take them. You, you put a big man in the back of a truck with a cage in it, that's the only way he can get in there is lay him down. Uh, the cage takes up most of the, the seat back there. You can't comfortably put your feet down. Uh, the van would do, do good for taking people, you know, on, and like I said, these, these, all of them, I mean, we would use it for transport into prisons and everything too, but we do a lot of transports that, uh, they're not criminals. They just everyday citizens that's had some problems and, and a lot of us are getting old and dementia and it could be any of us that's in there. Uh, so I think, uh, Ms. Payden may have it worked out if we, we go with this route, uh, that we could, we could get these three vehicles and then I think we would be fine for the rest of the year. I know I said that a few months ago, but I didn't know that, uh, this vehicle we got, it was, a deer was gonna head in and did, uh, about six thousand dollars damage to it. We still have to drive it right now with two doors caved in, windows won't go down and the lights has busted out on it. And then we got another, another one that's needs, needs fixing. And insurance has paid on some of these. I mean, we got the insurance made it to fix them. We just don't have time to park them or, and so they can be fixed, you know? So this will give us one extra vehicle. We up to, we kinda up to, I think, well, we were up to full staff. We had one resign today. Uh, uh, other departments are offering, some are offering ten thousand dollar sign-on bonuses and twenty-five dollars an hour, you know? We can't afford that. Uh, so we're, we're doing, we're doing good to keep, keep the people we got. Uh, we actually have five full-time deputies to patrol now. And, uh, cause then along comes the, we have probation officer, we can have school resource, we have, uh, the jailers, we have courthouse security. I mean, we have other, other people besides people that just patrol. And, uh, so I'm just asking, I know money's tight on everybody, but if we could, we can make this happen, I think we'd be good for rest of the year. The, the grant or the lease program, it probably down the road and then we, and we can look at the city in maybe two or three years and say, you know, that it is a good, good, good program or not. They have, I think they finally had three trucks that were delivered, but the cars, the patrol cars they've had, I think it's been over twelve months now since they ordered them and they still don't have them. And I talked to the chief a few minutes ago and he said that if they get any anytime soon, they may get three. They don't know when they get the rest of them, so we can't wait a year to, uh, to, to do this. And, and it may be, it may be a money-making program, you know, I mean, and that, but I think that's something that the, uh, maybe we could look at, use the city as a example, you know, a year or two down the road and see if that's, uh, if this, that's the way to go.
Or these vehicles with the city, are they available now?
Yes, they, they're available.
And they already kinda got stickers and all on them too, don't they?
No, no, all that stuff they took off.
They took all that off?
They did leave the wiring. They did leave the wiring on there, you know, they, they, uh.
What, weed rag stuff and all?
They always has to do, they use red lights, we would use blue lights, uh, on them, and, uh, the van, they had done, it had the transport cage in it, they took the transport cage out of it in hopes of selling, selling the van, you know, on the lease program, but they would give us the transport van, which would be several thousand dollars, but that, you know, we had to buy that. The truck that Cody had, uh, it had, uh, and we had done agreed to purchase this slide-out vault, it, it goes the whole length of the truck, this, this truck has got a cover on the back, it's got a slide-out vault in there, we were gonna use that for our, uh, crime scene stuff, you got a bunch of little stuff, flags and stuff that don't need to get wet, uh, it would be covered, uh, so that would, we were gonna buy and put it in another vehicle from, from them, but, uh, it's already in this vehicle with the cover on it, so that's, that's another probably a couple of thousand dollars right there that, you know, that, uh, we wouldn't have.
So we need to go ahead and buy these now?
Yes.
So do we need to?
Well.
What kinda money is it?
We need to do a note on this?
I mean, we can't just buy them outright.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to.
Do we need to get a note until the?
I was just getting a note.
We're gonna have to get a note, and then when we get the money from USDA, renew the note, get payments down, and then make monthly payments out of splash.
What kinda money from USDA?
It'll be the fifty thousand, it usually goes fifty, like if you're a hundred thousand or more, you get fifty thousand. So he'll, so after, after that grant, you, you guys, if you wanna do it, you have to make a motion to, to go ahead and apply for that grant as well. But once you do that, it's gonna leave him about sixty-one thousand total that we would have to pay.
We'll have to borrow the whole thing and then redo the note and then we get the fifty.
Make a motion to do all that.
Okay, once you get the grant, you turn around and put the fifty thousand on it.
Yeah, we need a motion, we need a motion to apply for the grant, and a motion to buy the vehicles and finances. Two motions.
We have a motion to apply for the grant.
I make a motion to apply for the grant.
Second.
I make a motion to buy.
Say.
I second.
All in favor, on applying for the grant?
She motioned, she second for the grant, he motioned, I second for the buy.
Alright, now we'll go ahead, okay, well, do we need to go over that bind it again for the motion?
We can.
Okay, so everything's good then, okay.
Thank y'all.
Catch some bad guys.
We got them.
That ain't no problem, is it?
Okay, next on the agenda, update ACCG contract, contact lists and signatures, page fifty-one through fifty-two.
Now, all that is, is, is going and renewing our, um, risk management insurance. They just had an old clerk's name on there and had me still listed as the same employee, and I just had to change names, so you, I just need you to sign that.
Okay, so I didn't think a motion would be allowed to sign it, is that correct? We have a motion for me to sign it?
My motion?
Second.
I second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Motion carried. Letter of certification, H A M C.
So what this is, Jill sent this through email, she says periodically that they have to update this, it's just a letter showing that they're certified as a, as a hospital, for, for county hospital, um, just, it tells them they were incorporated or, or created in March the second of nineteen fifty-five, the last one that was updated was from two thousand eighteen, so they just want to have your signature on it.
Okay. We need a motion for that? Okay, we need a motion for me to sign that for the hospital, we have a motion.
So Moon?
Second.
I second.
All in favor? Motion carried, anything else? Uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
My motion?
Absolutely, sexy.
Alright, all in favor?
Ah.